Now I want to move on to our consent agenda. So we've reviewed the minutes of our June board meeting, the legal transfer list, and the financial reports with all supporting documents. So we looked at those. There are other questions. I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. My Mr. Span, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. So now we'll move on to the section of student achievement. Homeschool, after I spoke with Mr. Conley through text back and forth, it'd be great to extend this portion to an agenda item. And so with that, typically, what we're going to do is we're going to let Mr. Pitt show the trend data for homeschool for our district and out in the state. And then we'll open it up. I have four people that have signed up to speak. Was there anybody that didn't see the sign up list on the outside, outside the front door? And we'll just have these four. So these four will be board member, and when they interact back and forth, they have some questions, but we'd like to turn that over to Mr. Pitt.
Yes, so Dr. Peter Chin will pull up the homeschool data sheet. So met with Mr. Conley a couple of weeks back and just trying to figure out exactly what he was looking for. And really, he was asking for homeschool data and some things that we may keep internally. There's not a whole lot that we can keep internally. We may have conversations with families at building level as opposed to trying to get to the root of maybe why somebody is choosing to homeschool, but we don't keep any records or any data of that. On the application for homeschool, there's not even a question as far as to give a reason. However, I did pull some data from the DESI homeschool website, so the Arts and Department of Education's website. Because like Mr. Conley and I talked, if we just talk numbers, we don't have anything really to compare that to. And it's hard to really get a grasp on what those numbers mean. So I just pulled, first off, let me say, the 2024-25 data is not yet public. So we don't have last year's data that was public. We do have 23-24, so that's why you see that number. So there, so you know, right there it shows Sheridan from DESI's count had, in 23-24, had 297 students who were homeschooled, which makes up roughly six and a half percent of our student body. And there's a comparison for, you know, 10 or 12 schools, you know, 6A schools that are our size, just to kind of give you some reference to that. If, I'll put it down just a little bit. Again, the 24-25 school year data does not yet available. We do have our, our data for Sheridan, but in, I guess, that minute. Another thing that Mr. Conley asked in his petition was the financial impact. And it's kind of hard to say on a daily basis, and really kind of hard to say period. But just to give you an idea, the primary funding source for schools is what we call ADN, which is average added membership, and is based off of a certain dollar figure per student. In 23-24, that dollar figure was $7,618 per student. And so you can, you know, do the math. And again, that's not going to give you the exact, exact financial impact, but it's, it's close.
About 2.5 in revenue there?
Roughly, yes. Trend data, again, we don't have 24-25 numbers yet, but you can see the Sheridan's trend over the last three years and then the state trend. And so the state trend is that there are more homeschool students throughout the state than there have been. And again, we don't have 24-25's number yet.
So with that being said, I'll, is there a certain order that I might add?
Yeah, yeah, what's my time limit, just so I'm respectful of everybody here?
So typically, it's three minutes. So we got Mr. Conley, Greg Conley, Melissa Shaw, Liz Strong. So is there a specific order that Shaw would like to go, or?
I'll go first if I can start right now. So the first thing I want to address right now is the sleight of hand taking place. My petition was under the auspices that we wanted this data based on what Mr. Crosswhite said in the egregious comments he made about the homeschooler families. It's absolutely despicable to me right now that we're just throwing this data up without the context of why we're here and why we want this meeting. So I want to start with that. So there was comments made at the last school board meeting. There was comments that were made about hundreds of homeschooling families about that were the problem, not the issues in the districts. And ladies and gentlemen, I did my research because that was so extremely offensive. But to give you the benefit of the doubt, I wanted to see if there was any truth to what you said. Well, you said that my family, my wife--
I did not say anything about your family.
You, yes, you did, sir.
No, I did not.
Is my, is my, is my attention--
I've never even mentioned you. I don't know anything about--
So why, why are you speaking? This is going to prove my point too. Okay, thank you. Because we can, we can gavel down the truth, but we can't gavel down when things are blatantly said that are false. You, sir, are not going to bully me. I've come with--
I'm not trying to bully you.
I've come with receipts today. When you say that we're the bigger issue in the community, you said it three times, they're the problem, the problem, the problem. You know what I have right now? I have every single police report from 2025 of the incidences that took, took place in this school. There is everything going on in this school from bestiality, yes, and I have the receipts. You, would you like me to pull them up, sir?
You can't mention people's names here.
I don't need to mention their names.
Sure, you got three minutes?
We have, I'll, I'll read, I'll read this one to you if, if they don't gavel me down by then. From students getting assaulted, we have, we have brake lines getting cut, we have kids with drugs, we have, we have students that are being stomped down to such a degree that as a UFC fan, they don't even fight like that on TV. And you're going to sit there and tell us that we're the problem? And then, you know what, I'm directing my, my conversation with you right now? But you know what, I hold all of you equally responsible. Because while you said it, I've listened to the work sessions, ladies and gentlemen, you on oversight of what goes on in our houses. You're just the one, you're just the one that happened, happened to say it, Wade. You're the one that happened to say--
No, it was me talking, it wasn't none of them.
I have heard it. I will pull, if I got to have another meeting, I will do it. We will get to the truth, ladies and gentlemen. We will.
What do you want? Your kids aren't going to school this--
What do I want? I want transparency. I want you to treat your--
Why are you even watching the school board meeting? You're not even in the school, school.
So you're using my money, right?
Not all of it.
Not all of it. So I guess that makes it okay.
So you're using money by people in the home--
I guess the question isn't what you like. If you were given reasons why you chose to take your child out of school, I think that's what, I mean, I'm interested. And I know when everybody talks here, I would like to know, are there some things that we may as a district--
So, so let me clarify. The first thing I want, I want an apology from you--
You're out of luck, pal.
You're out of luck.
I promise you that.
Good, good to know. Good to know. The contempt that you have shown--
You should apologize to our taxpayers for wasting everybody's time and money and not even part of the school district.
Because, because you--
That's right.
You sat there and you said false statements. You know what, let me read the quote and then I'll be done. I'm going to pull that report that I talked about, the bestiality going on in the school that doesn't seem to be on your radar. Where a young girl, and I report, let me, let me see if I can pull this up. It was a young white student with a black dog. It was going around on a social media platform where the dog was licking the girl's vagina. And you're concerned about homeschool parents? And you have the gall to sit there and tell me I need to apologize?
Yes. What you do is create division in our school district. We've got a great school district. You know, like, you go to Little Palm, look for--
Why, you know, you know what--
We've got a great school district. We ought to be siding with our teachers and the school board and praising them. They're doing a great job.
You're politicking, Wade. You're politicking.
What are you doing? You're showing up to a meeting you had nothing to do with.
I do.
You're wasting everybody's time.
You called us out by name.
I never said anybody's name.
When you said the homeschool--
I said nobody's name.
When you said the homeschooling community was the problem--
I said it is a problem. We're losing revenue. Look. And it's growing every year.
So that's, that's more important, okay. I, I want, I'm going to, I'm going to pass it on to somebody else. I got two more things to say, and I'm actually very thankful for what you have just displayed. You know, I, I'm going to, I'm going to end with this. Today, we started by invoking the wisdom of God. And you know what, I'm going to leave you with this, sir. There's a famous passage. It says, "Behold, the Son of Man has come, eating and drinking." And they've said, "Look, a friend of tax collectors, a glutton and a drunkard. But wisdom, sir, is justified by her children." You, sir, are on the wrong side of history. And, and it's going to be evident after this.
It's your thing, buddy. You know, just, just for me, I want to say something, Jeff. And when people do this stuff, you call these meetings. When you call a meeting like this, it shouldn't be because you cannot get in touch with the school board or with the superintendent. That is not the case with us. All of these people answer the phone. When you do this, you deter teachers from coming to our district. You deter students from transferring in. You sure deter people from going to school. I mean, these guys are doing this for free. And they're having to get called for extra meetings. And I will say, at least you show up. It's the 50 or 60 people that sign the documents that's really disappointing. It's showing that you don't support. And what it does is it hurts the education system. And it makes it harder. And we can't get good school board members. We're going to start getting bad school board members. And we're going to lose Mr. Pitts. And we're going to start losing all these people. We've got a really grateful name here, Shaw, and we need to protect it. Get it carried down. And like I said, these people aren't even part of our school district. He doesn't care.
Your own words condemn you.
They don't even, they don't care.
Why you think they're leaving?
You made your three minutes.
Why you think they're leaving, Wade?
You made your three minutes.
Your own words condemn you, sir.
But protect our school district. And, and when they come to you with these stupid petitions, they don't think you support our superintendent. You support the school. I'm going to break the list. I'm going to read off the names. It shouldn't be in it. It needs to be transparent.
If any parents want the incident numbers that I have, that I'm talking about, you meet me in the hallway. Because this is about truth. And this is about the safety of our children. I promise you, sir, I have not come in here with any violation of my integrity. I will, I will spend as much time with any of you.
So I've, I've never seen a place before, and I'm not saying it's operated--
I can show you. I'll probably pull it up for you.
I'm not speaking that. And those things are, you know, you can bring those to the superintendent or the board. I mean, if we have that going on, that's appalling to me. I mean, I've never heard that. I have not. It would be appalling to know that that has happened in the school district. I know there's fights. I know there's different instances where drugs have been brought in. We try to have policies to deal with all those. Does this board know every one of them? We don't. We don't, we don't get every, I don't see every police report. And my question would be, and I know this got a little bit out of hand, maybe, I would like to know what are some real reasons why? I mean, I don't think that, that that's the only reason. I mean, I say I've never seen that report, so I'm sure probably most of these 329 may not have seen, I mean, they might have taken their kid out of the school district because of PCL, yeah.
No, they're, they're taking him out because there's reports that I have also where the district was notified that a student was being bullied and nothing was done. The police had to tell you. I have another report of a student getting slammed in the head with a basketball. She was dizzy and bleeding the next day and was sent from the school because of evaluations that were needed. Shall I go on, Mr. Crosswhite?
No.
Nope, your three minutes are up.
You can send those, send those names off on the council. So we'll, we'll-- Grant, is it, are you ready?
I just hope you don't speak to me like that. I don't--
You speak to me with respect, and I appreciate it.
Listen, first off, hey, girls. If I were to say blue is a color, is that a fact or an opinion?
A fact.
A fact. And if I were to say that blue is the best color, is that a fact or an opinion?
Oh, that's an opinion.
Okay. You're losing kids to homeschool. Is that a fact or an opinion? That's a fact. I'm not trying to disparage you. That's fine. When my husband played me back the school board meeting, I don't know you either. I know you're a prominent figure in the community. I know people know you. I'm not from here. I don't know you. Unfortunately, my opinion of you has gone to the floor after today, which was not what I was expecting, and I'm very disappointed to know that. Things can change, but as of right now, I know you probably don't care because you don't know each other, but just putting it back up, my opinion, okay? Your opinion, last school board meeting, or the specially called meeting, was that these kids aren't getting an education. They're missing out on opportunities. They're not going to college. That is your opinion?
Let me tell, let me--
Is this taking away from my three minutes if you're speaking? Because I would like to--
So homeschool kids can be successful. They can go to college. I'm telling you, I see, I have teachers tell me, we hire kids, and on average, the kids that I see, it's not working for. And the people that I see pulling their kids out, they're bringing them back. And the ones, and like I said, I know ten people that's on school, right? You're doing it right, I commend you. It can be done right. I wish they were in our district. The numbers you can see are going up, so something is wrong. There's a reason people are pulling their kids out. And that's a problem. And, but I'm, the ones that I see, no. It's, I see a lot of horror stories. People apply for jobs for us, and they don't cut it. They don't fit in. I hear teachers tell me that a kid went homeschool for two years, comes back, and they're reading in the second grade level instead of a fifth grade level. So can it be done right? Absolutely. On the average, I don't believe it is. I mean, you think, well, we got 420 teachers, something like that. These, these people are educated. They're college degrees, some masters, some doctors. They collaborate together. They've got specialized subjects. They, they hold each other accountable. We have principals that help them with different things. I mean, it only makes sense that that would be a better system on average. Maybe you're smarter than all of our teachers, but most people are not. And on average, I think that's the reason we started the public education system, right?
I can't say yes or no to that, but I appreciate you sharing your perspective. Now, we all know that everybody's perspective is slightly different. I'm seeing you from this angle. They're seeing you from that angle, correct? So the data you have is not all of the data that there is.
No, that's--
Perhaps there are some people who homeschooling isn't for. I just started homeschooling my girls a year ago. We adopted them. We weren't able to homeschool while they were in the foster care system. But now that they're ours, we're homeschooling. I have seen such an increase in their social skills, their memory, their learning. Anybody who, you guys have known my girls, and I'm not trying to be biased. Have you seen a growth in them since we brought them home? Their language skills? And I'm not saying, hey, public school, you failed my children. Do you see all the kids who graduate from school or drop out or bringing drugs or destroy bathrooms or beat each other in the hallway or are sexually active within whatever? I don't do that. I'm a part of a homeschool group that has about 70 kids or more, and not one parent has ever spoken about the public school system or public school parents the way that you spoke about us. Mr. Crosswhite, I don't want to be here. I want to be in my bath, in my, in my pajamas, in my slippers, in my own home, cooking dinner for my family. But I can't let statements like that go unchecked when I hold my 10, or 11 and 13-year-old accountable for their words. It's not below you to say, you know what, maybe I didn't have all the information, or maybe what I say came out the wrong way. And if it did, then I apologize. But you are continuing to double down on statements that hurt your community, the very community you say that you love. I have no problem with Sheridan's school district. It's just not for my family. Getting them up super early in the morning to rush them to school, to rush back and rush during this, I'm not about that. And I feel extremely disrespected that you're going to make those statements. You're going to double down. You know what we said? Maybe he took it, maybe we're taking what he said out of context. We wanted to give you the opportunity to let us know what you were thinking. But you're just being rude, and I don't understand that. I just--
So I've been rude to you?
You've been rude to my husband, which I do take slight offense to. And, and it's not that, I don't think that men can, like--
Who is it?
In the wheelchair.
Oh.
So I don't think that it's wrong for men especially to have a heated conversation. I spoke to my children on the way here. I said, hey, things might get elevated, and that's okay. But where I think things might have gone a little off the rails, and I will give you grace if you have a statement you can make to apologize, but telling my husband that he can just leave and that he's causing division because you said, sir--
And he said stuff to me too. So he said, that was egregious, and--
Hold on a second, but hold on, let me--
I'm going to fire back when somebody says that.
Or, okay, that's a personal choice. It's not one that I would make, okay? Especially in a point of leadership and a point where our tax dollars are paying. I would expect--
Hey, right now, hey, have people pulled data for you guys?
Hey, I would just like to finish my sentence if I can. I mean, if you needed a moment to speak, I'd be glad to listen. But this is my time, if you don't mind. Can I speak? I appreciate that. So I would appreciate also the emotional intelligence to withhold your tongue as a leader in this building. If you feel offended, I get it. We're offended. You offended me, my husband, my children. One of the kids even heard you, what you said, and he said, does he think we're stupid? So all we're saying is, you made a statement as a fact when it was indeed your opinion. Do you disagree with that? Do you think that your opinion that homeschool students do not go on to further their education? You didn't say some homeschool students. You said all. And sir, words matter. Do you agree that you stand in defending that fact?
I said, it became word.
Did you say that originally?
I don't know. I've never watched it.
Okay, well, I will let you know because we've watched it multiple times to be prepared because--
Why are you watching the school?
Sir, hold on, sir. If I can finish this, hold on. Because right now, what you're doing is you're deflecting and you're not answering my question. And that's very telling. Sir, if I could speak without you interrupting me, I'd be so glad to give it to you. Your statement, you made an opinion as a fact. You did say that homeschool students are not getting another education. They're not going to college, and they're losing out on the education. That is what you said as a fact. And my experience is different than yours. You see kids that come back. Maybe that's because they don't have what it takes. But that doesn't mean there aren't homeschool families who do have what it takes and are pouring their heart and soul and taking their time and doing it on a lesser budget than what you guys are doing it. If you're truly bothered or upset or whatever word you want to use, because I don't want to take the seriousness of this away from you because this is what you're passionate about, why are homeschool families leaving? Well, if this is how you treat everybody who offends you, I would leave again.
You've already left.
You're right, but it wasn't because of this. It was because my 10-year-old brought home a book that had two boys kissing in it without my consent.
Well, how many--
It is, okay, it is because another little boy put his hands on my child's thigh. It is because another little boy said he was going to kiss my daughter at the tree in the playground. It is because my other daughter was given a sucker that was stuck in trash, and they laughed at her when she ate it. It is because they're playing furries on the playground and tying leashes around their necks. What kind of education is that? Why would I subject my children to that kind of behavior? I'm not there to protect them. They are children. And if the adults there are there to teach, they don't have time to monitor every single thing. My child was reading at a first grade level in public school in fifth grade. That is why Mr. Crosswhite. And I would like to have started with those facts, but I just think your behavior and your response needed to be adjusted as well. Because I don't let my children act like that.
Well, thank you for spelling it.
It's, okay. I appreciate your lack of maturity, and I'm good.
It's Conley, those things that you just listed at the end. It's in your list of those things.
I will, I will.
Let's see. Melissa Shaw.
I think, I know you. You've known me for a while. My name's Melissa Shaw. I'm a taxpayer and a community member and the very proud mother of a 2025 homeschool graduate. My son, who's back there in the back, earned three scholarships. He's actively involved in this church and community, and he'll begin an electrician apprenticeship this fall. He was one of 84 graduates who walked the stage at the Education Alliance Homeschool Graduation Ceremony in Cersei, a class that collectively earned over $2.3 million in scholarships. He and both my kids, myself and both my kids, were pretty offended that he felt like they didn't have a future and that they missed out on an education. I have these, I have these remarks typed up, but I don't, I don't think it's necessarily going to matter. I guess what I hope is that you'll take a minute, all of the board members will take a minute to look at peer review research that shows statistically how well homeschoolers perform on standardized tests, their graduation, their graduation rates, their GPAs. It's all out there. It's all available, you know? It's, it's not just anecdotal, it's, it's true. And I guess I just hope that I would like an assurance that homeschool families will be treated with the same respect and neutrality afforded to other taxpayers in this community, you know, should we decide to interact with the public school. Because it's feeling just a little bit hostile. You know, you guys have a position of authority, and when you speak about things like homeschooling and cast it in a negative light, it's discouraging to kids and to parents. I know you don't have to be an advocate, and I know, you know, from a business perspective, it's important to focus on, you know, why you're losing kids. But the statements that you make, they, they carry weight. And I, I think what I wanted most from my kids from this was if you, there's going to come a point in time where you say something that, that may not be accurate. And if that's the case, then you should have the integrity to take a look at the data and then apologize and, you know, learn from your mistakes. And that's kind of what I wanted from them the most. So I'm very proud of my son and what he's, what he had, what he overcame. We pulled him at the end of first grade and chose to go our own route. And I'm very thankful that we did that. I'll never ever regret homeschooling. I'll never regret the time that I got to spend with my kids. And I hope that you'll take a minute to, to reevaluate and, and, you know, work hand in hand with some of the homeschoolers. I think we do some things right. So thank you very much for your time this evening.
Appreciate your comment. Also, I've studied my law as a student, and I think we all are good parents. And I think we have enough people to value our homes and our kids. And so we take that very seriously. I know that you do too. And I think that's important. I think we all have the opportunity to do what we do best for our kids. And I, I don't, whatever someone chooses to do with their kids, and I think they're doing what's best for them. I applaud you for that. I think you're as strong at it as you can. Applaud your son. That's, that's great. Certainly need more electricians, and that's, um, we'd be proud to, to see him as someone in our community soon, so, uh, that was, uh, close, Rob.
I want to, I ought to ask one question. Hey, I'm Pat Benatar, hit the weak shot.
Say it again.
I'm Pat Benatar, hit the weak shot. Uh, let me ask you a question, do you think I support this community or not?
Is that directed at me?
My first question is, do I support this community and this school or not?
You, you asking me?
Yes.
I think you want to.
But you don't like it, do you?
I think you cause the vision.
Well, we have a right to do, I'm the guy that writes petitions, we have a right to do that, it's a legal right. And I think it's our right to exercise all our legal rights. And I have spent time meeting with Mr. Pitts. And some of them make it go well. And I've asked for information that I haven't gotten. So I've tried to work through the system, it doesn't work with me. So, but anyway, and I'm going to probably do another petition, that's our right. It is our right to have meetings, it's our right to call meetings, it's our right to vote, it's our right to do everything here in America. But I think, you may not agree with this statement, but most of my life, I've been a big supporter of this school and this community, and I think I still am. You know, but I am also the guy referred to in petitions, but guess what, I can't be offended.
I didn't say your name.
Oh, no, you did, but I'm the guy that's done most petitions.
Fair enough.
And guess what, I'm probably the guy that does the most. But the thing, the situation is here.
Do you understand what I'm saying, though?
Well, just because we don't agree, but we can't, you remember the last thing we went through? If I had not stepped up, I guess you'd say called the vision, where would we be at today?
I, I don't know what you're referring to.
The past two, two, two tenths ago. You think I should have done that, I shouldn't have took that battle on?
I'm, I'm not sure what I'm-
Jerry Williams. The perverts, the kids in the bathroom, the child being molested, arrest being made, the hotline not being called.
I think that was before I was on the board.
It was before you don't go-
Okay, but I think I did go show that right.
If I hadn't stepped up then. So, guess what, I'm not going to work. You don't let, that's what we get that clear about. But I do think, you know, we have the right to speak, and I appreciate y'all giving us the right to meet up here, but we also have the right to call these meetings. And, you know, if you want to take your company, get the petition and try to single those people out, go ahead. They're American students, they have the right to sign those petitions. And that mainly what that petition means is they're granting somebody the right to speak, to call the people. You know, I sign petitions for people who are wrong, I can't vote for most, I can't vote for some of them. I mean, I'm not going to vote for some of them, but you might write the sign a petition, you know what I'm saying? So, but anyway, on the homeschooling issue, they should have never been brought into the conversation. The conversation on that agenda on that night was about THC. So I understand why they're offended, I understand where you are. You know, and I do believe you're supporting the school, that's not what I'm saying, my question, your loyalty to this community, one way or another. But I do think sometimes like me, you put your foot in the ground, and that just how it goes.
You have that.
Uh, may I speak frankly? It is not going to take three minutes and I will be respectful. I'm not on the list.
Are you on speaker?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you. Let me start by saying I am absolutely terrified of public speaking, so you're just so fair with me. But through this, through this meeting, I have been writing my thoughts. I understand the financial impact on the school district, okay? And if you had left it at that, I would have rolled my eyes and been like, okay, fine. What concerns me so much more are the comments that our kids are missing out on an education and not attending colleges or trade schools. That is blatantly false, just statistically, Google. This is not an us versus them issue, and it should not be. That is a major problem in our society, that everything is an us versus them, and that's not where we want to go. That's not where we wanted to take it. So far as your statement that has me shaking angry right now, that it was a waste of taxpayer money to call this meeting or for us to be at this meeting. Even though we've removed our children from the school district, I did attend the school district for a couple of years, I have wonderful teachers. There were my kids, I'm sorry. Even though we are not a part of this school district anymore, it is still our community that we live in and we work in. The success of this school district directly affects our lives, our futures, and the community that our children are going to live in and the adults they would work in one day. So it does matter. We do get a voice. As not only community members, just as taxpayers, because we do pay taxes into this. We deserve the same respect and voice despite our different opinions as any other parent or community member. It is not a waste of taxpayer money, and it is never and never will be a waste of taxpayer money to allow taxpayers to have a voice and be able to speak out when they have to. That is all I have.
Is there any other board members that can say anything?
I would like to say something. Uh, I can't speak for any other board member, but I, I do support myself. Many, many of you know I'm, uh, in my twenties, I don't have kids, and so a lot of people ask me, why do I want to be on the school board? I want to be on the school board because I don't want to have to homeschool my kids one day. I see a lot of the same things that some of y'all state in education, something y'all are worried about, whether that's liberal indoctrination or whatever. I, it's not going on here, but I, it's a problem across the, across the nation. And, uh, as, as society, um, advances, it's only going to get worse. And I can imagine when I have kids, it's only going to be worse. I mean, it's just been the last ten years of all this nonsense come up with, you know, trans athletes and all that, and bathrooms and all those issues that I have concerns about, so I'm on the school board because I don't want to homeschool my kids one day. I want my kids to have the same conservative education that I had in small towns and public schools, and that's why I'm here. Um, so I support your right to have the homeschool, I support them a hundred percent. And I think the people in this room that are, that are concerned, that are voicing their opinions right now, I have no doubt that y'all have kids that are going to be well rounded, they're going to be successful, they're going to go to college or trade schools or whatever. Y'all are not the problem, but we still do have a homeschool problem. And that homeschool problem are the parents that don't do it the right way. And I'm not the ones to be the arbiter of who's doing it right, who's not. There are parents that take their kids out of school and then put them right back in two years later. They keep pulling them in and out, pulling them in and out, pulling them in and out. They're not doing it the way y'all are doing this, they're not.
Yeah, that's not homeschool, thank you, Jacob, thank you. Thank you for making that distinction, I greatly appreciate that.
And that is, and thank you for, and that is a big issue because they come in, they get pulled out, and they get put back in school, pulled out, get back in school, and then they're two grades behind. Um, and there are already overwhelmed teachers who are having to devote resources and time to catch those kids up and taking valuable time away from the other parents who don't have the opportunity to homeschool their kids. And so I just wanted to say that, that I, I can't speak for anybody else, I support homeschooling if it's done the right way. Again, it's not me to be the arbiter of that, but we do have a homeschool issue in that, in that regard, that, that some parents don't do it the right way. And it ends up costing not only our teachers, but our other students who don't have the opportunity.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, and I, I'll check on that too. I, I have, one of my business partners homeschools. I, I know some people that homeschool and have done it right, it can be done right. And, uh, and I may have said that incorrectly, but I'd take it as it is. It is a problem, it is a growing problem, numbers are going up. We have a great school district, uh, and I'm going to be an advocate for the school district always, so, uh, Ms. Shaw, I don't know if she's still here. I know you can do a great job, Rachel, and obviously you have, so congratulations to that. Uh, and there are a lot of people that do, there's a lot of people that don't. And, uh, and, you know, I should have said some, uh, but it is a problem. And, uh, our, our community is growing, our school district is shrinking. And we've got more people in homeschool now than we did here in COVID. Uh, it, it's, uh, it's a number game, and so that's what I'm seeing.
And I will say, on behalf of the homeschool community, if there's a genuine, uh, question as to why, we're not opposed to sharing that with you. We want to see the school district do well, but we don't want to get dragged through the mud because numbers are shrinking. And there is a distinction between people who are just throwing their kids in and out, because that's not homeschool. That's ir, that's irresponsibility, that is not homeschool. So perhaps for future, so this doesn't have to happen anymore, maybe just specify, change the language, because words matter. Pulling your kids in and out, that's whiplash, that's not homeschool. I just think-
Um, so I think the, um, intention of everyone in the, the district and you guys who homeschool is just that you want the best for your children. And I, I always believe in the parent as the first teacher, and the parent does have that right. I, I was just remembering early ed background and working with, um, teachers in the early ed field. I always say, the parent is the first teacher, they are the, the one we listen to. And so I value that, and I understand a lot of times, um, home people who homeschool or choose that for their children for doing from personal conviction, um, looking at a value system that you want, um, demonstrated or lived in your home. You want flexibility for your children, sometimes the, it's a resiliency factor. You mentioned that you, and your husband adopted your, your girls, I mean, that's a resiliency thing, it's a protective factor. You're put in place to help, um, build their resiliency later on, so that, that's commendable. And then, uh, just sometimes there's different opportunities available that aren't available in public school. And, um, and so I just, I do appreciate that as well. We are all on a public school board here, sitting up here on this end, so we do advocate for the public school as well. And my very best friend is a, is a teacher in this district, and she works her rear end off all of these people. And so, um, and just as you do your child at home. So I'm so thankful that there was a, uh, opportunity to distinguish the difference, as you mentioned, yo-yo, is that what you call this? Homeschooling, and so I'm thankful for the opportunity to differentiate that. I do respect and value what happens in the home, and you as your child first educator, and the different opportunities that can be provided. I would like the opportunity to learn from, uh, from you guys as well, from, from our standpoint. What can a public school do, a district do to learn from a homeschool setting? What, what could we possibly change, what could we possibly do? Um, I also know that there, I don't know what they are, Mr. Pitts would know more about that. There are opportunities, and I'm sure some of you all, or if you are not in the room, others, take advantage of the opportunities for your kids to participate in some of the extracurricular activities and maybe just AP courses, I'm just speaking on that, AP courses. Um, uh, never mind, don't quote me on that.
Yeah, we're allowed, we're allowed to participate in class, and we're allowed to participate in various classes along as, you know, as long as the school board and of course sports, with following rules and procedures.
So I just think that's a, that's a mutual opportunity to, um, build unity. And I think, uh, Mr. Cross, Crossup mentioned that, just, uh, to lead division and create unity within our community. Because you're right, these kids who, uh, his child, I can't remember, I'm sorry to say that, hold on, um, about, they're going to grow up and they are going to live in this community, so they are going to live here. So we want, um, that's all, we want the whole community to be made up of educated people, wise people, caring people, people who love each other, people who, um, support each other and who are not ready to initiate. So, um, thank you, thank you for your respectful comments, and thank you for allowing the opportunity to differentiate, uh, between the two types of homeschooling.
And I would just like to say, I'm, I'm a former educator, I taught for thirty-three years. And I admire anyone who can homeschool their children, because I could never do that with my own children. And I respect your rights, you, you have a choice, that is the law. You have a choice to educate your children, how do you see it? And I totally respect that. The law for this is it. Um, I sit on the board because I want to represent the children and the parents who choose for their children to have a public education. And I want to make sure those children have the best education possible. But no disrespect to you all, I don't-
I guess one more little concern is that, you know, I, I, I would hate, you know, Wade, if, if Callan came and applied to work, you know, over there at Reef Connect, and you saw that he was homeschool, you know, that, is that going to be a negative, you know, aspect in your mind? You know, that, that's, that's something else that I guess I was concerned about, as, as my child does move into the workforce, you know, if, if that's an opinion that's held, you know, I would like to, to do my best to, to change that perception, to change that, you know, that, that idea that he, that he lacked in education. So, yeah, I just would hope that, that he would be given, I guess, the benefit of the doubt, you know, uh, as he moves into the workforce.
Yeah, that's not something that I do best with RH, RH or Department, that's all that, and that's what they've-
Yeah, but you know what I mean. So I just, I don't want people to look and go and, and think that he had a subpar education, so.
But unfortunately, that is the opinion that they have because of the averages that they're seeing. So I think, you know, I think it's something that, uh, it sounds like, uh,
Is that a factor in opinion?
There's always exceptions, and we know that too, but, uh, it is something that they, that's what they tell me, so that's what I hear.
Well, I'll wind it up here, I was a former educator too, it's like my stuff. Oh, well, and I, I got the privilege to convene with those kids, I have about a hundred and thirty-five every year that I have. And those parents gave them to me for that, those few hours a day, and that was probably the greatest responsibility I could ever have. Just because I had that time to, to be there and close to them. And I'll be honest, there's some of those kids, I mean, I, I have a lot of special kids, I mean, I, I have some of them, I mean, it's not it's in the world and some of them are the ones that are going to make sure they always have their stuff turned in on time. And I know for me, what made me successful as a teacher is I, I kept those parents involved and make sure that not yet, they may call and I say, what I need to do with my kids, I said, you might need to put your kids back when they get home. For this one, you know, I'll, I'll help you with this homework, or I can do those things. And it all takes everybody working together to make sure that, uh, that it is effective education. And I'll say, education is a program, there's some that, that, uh, it, and it's a parent's right, so, um, appreciate y'all being here. I appreciate the temperature of the room going back down some, appreciate that. I do thank, uh, everybody in the community that's, uh, concerned about our district. Do want to stress, I mean, my contact information is on the website, and I can get called a lot. And I will tell you, I signed up for that, and you can call on the cell phone, uh, send me emails, whatever you need to do. I'll gladly talk to you about the situation of our district and about kids, anything that affects kids. And I think, uh, I, I know Mr. Strong chose it, I don't mind talking to him long about something like that, I, I will. So, Superintendent's office is always open, and any board member, I think all of our information is out there. So, so I, I do want to know some of these reasons and some of those, I mean, I heard some things thrown out there, and, and I know it was thrown out in, in, in shop.
Well, the Scholastic Book Fair puts books that show two boys kissing targeted at my children. That's an issue, so if you guys could work-
I would absolutely like to say that.
Yeah, uh, it's called Drama, and it came from your Scholastic Book Fair.
I mean, sir, since, since, I'm, I'm asking, I'm-
Yeah, I just wanted it to be-
I heard board members asking to say, but I, I, I would like to say it.
Scholastic Book Fair.
Can I say one, uh, other thing, just to continue in the lowering of the temperature? There absolutely is division, but I want to make the point, division's not bad. We need to have a barometer of truth, which we're all equally looking at. Yes, obviously, me and Mr. Crossway are, are not seeing eye to eye on things. I have nothing personal against this, man, I have nothing personal against anybody. As a matter of fact, half the day today, I spent praying for the words of saying how to handle this, how to deal with it. I will pray for every single one of you up here, and that's not to say, oh, look at me, or, or anything like that. It's for the purpose of, I understand that we are a community. That is why I'm concerned, because when division is inputted, that's not based off of truth, that's when we get these issues. And as far as the issues of why parents are pulling their kids, there's a lot going on, guys.
And I, I do want to say that, and I appreciate the prayers, because I promise, uh, please, we all need them.
That's it, we all need them.
Amen.
And that's what, I, I think that's what's a, a great thing about our community is, is we are a, a community that, uh, that's pretty together. So let's, uh, appreciate it, that we do have several other action items we need to do along too tonight. So I will move now to the, our first action item against the school policies that you presented, uh, and what is recommended.